Good afternoon, everybody. We'll call to order the meeting for Salina City Commission Monday, October 27, 2025. And I'll request the confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes, it has.
Thank you. On to roll call.
Mayor Lenkowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ivy.
Here.
Commissioner Longbine.
Here.
Thank you. All those that are able, please stand and join me for a pledge of allegiance and moment of silence. My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation and government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. And that brings us to public hearings.
Item 3-1, conduct a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance number 25-11262, vacating a portion of a seven-foot by 20-foot platted utility easement located in the southwest corner of Lot 3 in Block 4 of the Claremont Heights addition.
Thank you. We'll officially open this hearing.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Dustin Michelson with Community and Development Services. This is a vacation petition filed by Charles Poor to vacate a seven-foot wide by 20-foot long portion of a side yard utility easement. Judy and Charles Poor are the owners of the property addressed as 2014 Ruskin Road, which is Lot 3 in Block 4 of the Claremont Heights addition. Claremont Heights addition was platted in 1957 and contains a number of rear and side yard utility easements that were laid out at the time of plating. In June of 2025, the property owners applied for a detached accessory structure permit and proposed to construct a detached garage located near the southwest corner of the property. In order for the proposed driveway to align with the location of the garage door, the garage was located close to the west side property line, which conflicts with the platted utility easement that runs along the rear 20 feet of the side property line and connects to a larger utility easement that runs along the rear property lines of all the lots on that block. We worked with the owners to consider a few options for relocating the garage to stay out of the easement, but shifting the garage to the east would make it difficult to get a vehicle around the rear of the dwelling. And due to the relatively small or shallow backyard, it wouldn't be possible to move the garage to the south. So after discussion with the owners, we agreed that having the garage as close to the west property line as possible with a minimum of five-foot setback would really be the only feasible way to get adequate vehicle access to the garage. So this means that the proposed location of the garage would encroach into that easement by two feet, which is why the Poor's have to petition to have this portion of the easement vacated and eliminate the building restrictions that are created by that easement. We worked with all of our local public and franchise utilities, and none of them report having any existing utilities in the easement area that's proposed to be vacated, and they don't have any objection to the easement vacation. On Page 2, we've provided some possible findings that would support this easement vacation. The easement no longer really serves a public purpose because there's no public or franchise utilities located in it, and the portion being vacated is entirely within the property owned by the petitioner, so their lot would be the only one impacted by the vacation. On Page 3, we've outlined the process for considering vacation requests. The mayor's already opened the public hearing, and you're receiving the report from staff. You can receive comments from the petitioner, members of the public, or any of the affected utilities. And you can close the public hearing after your questions and deliberation and then act on the ordinance that's in front of you. On Page 3, we've identified that you could approve the attached ordinance, vacating the seven-foot by 20-foot portion of the public utility easement as requested. You could postpone consideration of this petition to a future meeting day if you feel that you need additional information from staff or the petitioner. Or you could deny the petition if you find that it's not in the public interest to vacate this portion of the utility easement at this time. We do have the petitioners here if you have any specific questions, but we've coordinated this closely with the local utilities, and they don't have any objections to this portion of the easement being vacated at this time. With that, I'd be open to any questions that the Commissioners might have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
No.
Thank you. Would the petitioner like to come to the podium and say a few words? It's optional. You don't have to do it. Okay. Is there a member of the public that wishes to comment on this item? If there are no more questions, no more comments, I will bring it back to the Commission. I'll close the hearing.
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 25-11262, vacating a portion of a public easement located in the southwest corner of Lot 3 in Block 4 of the Claremont Heights addition in the city of Salina, Celine County, Kansas, as depicted in the attached exhibit.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance number 25-11262, vacating a portion of the platted utility easement located in the southwest corner of Lot 3 in Block 4 of the Claremont Heights addition. And roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ivy.
Aye.
Commissioner Longbine.
Aye.
Mayor Lenkowitz.
Aye. Thank you. And we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 4.1, consider approval of the minutes of the October 13, 2025, regular meeting. Item 4.2, consider awarding the bid for project number 25017, Fire Hydrant Painting, to Wildcat Painting Incorporated of Wichita, Kansas, for a total project authorization not to exceed $200,000. Item 4.3, consider awarding the bid for project number 25018, Water Tower Painting and Maintenance Sunset, to Maguire Iron Incorporated of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, in an amount not to exceed Item 4.4, consider awarding the bid for the Broadway Media Number 4 project to Prairie Land Works Incorporated of McPherson, Kansas, in an amount not to exceed $548,718.35.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda a Commissioner would like to remove?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to remove Item 4.2 and 4.4.
As far as the rest of the consent agenda, is there a member of the public that would wish to comment on any of those items? I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Mayor, move approval of Items 4.1 and 4.3 on the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of Item 4.1 and 4.3 on the consent agenda. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Same sign, 5 to 0. And then on to 4.2.
4.2, consider awarding the bid for project number 25017, Fire Hydrant Painting, to Wildcat Painting Incorporated of Wichita, Kansas, for a total project authorization not to exceed $200,000.
Thank you. Ms. Tasker.
Would you like to ask specific questions, or would you like to give me, want me to give a brief report?
Well, number one, I'd like the public to know this is happening. This is a project that I've been working on and moved forward for the last year and a half. So I'm glad it's come to pass. I guess my big question is the selection of the area. Are we gonna start with this whole northwest corridor? I'm looking at the map here in the packet.
Yes, and basically, that's Ohio on the east and Crawford on the south, and city limits on the north and west for those that don't have the map in front of them. That's the corridor we chose to start with because it's one of the older areas of our community, and it's also a gateway into our community, so we chose that. And then the park areas, which were a comment that we received through many, that they'd like the fire hydrants in the park to be spruced up to match the work that Parks and Rec has been doing in their parks. So that's how we got where we were. That's our first area we decided on.
Okay. That was my primary question. So what color are we gonna paint them?
High-visibility yellow, and that's the standard that we spec when we get our fire hydrants. And our goal, I thought you were gonna ask about the cost because I had a little sticker shock in the beginning, what it costs to paint a fire hydrant, but we talked to several contractors and got some ideas upfront about costs. Our goal is to put a paint product on there that lasts 15 years, similar to what we do on the exterior of our towers. Some of our fire hydrants' last coating doesn't look as good as we'd like to see it after 10 years, so I'd like to improve the quality that we paint all of these as we go forward, just for additional information. Staff's put a lot of effort into looking at these fire hydrants and probably more hours than anyone would imagine trying to decide which ones to paint and how to paint them because it's a project that's fairly new to us, and not every community paints their fire hydrants, but we wanna have some pride in them when we're done and have them all match and last for a few years.
And that's where the idea, for me, came from, is visiting other cities and seeing how nice they looked and how ours looked. So are we gonna budget to continue this and move south?
That's our goal, is to move south, assuming we get budget dollars for it. We'll be able to look at what we do with this project and see if we can make any improvements or see where the costs, how costs come in, if we get more interested in bidding.
Okay. So I thought I'd just share what I thought was interesting. In fact, we got approximately 2,625 fire hydrants in the city.
We do.
And this bid is gonna cover 465.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. That's all I had.
Okay.
Thank you. Any member of the public wish to comment on this item?
Ben, when I was in Salina, I wish I had my calculator out pretty quick here. 465 for 200,000. Can you give me what is on the scope of work as far as prep before these? They just gonna paint over what we've already got, or are they sandblasted down for this money? It seems like an awful lot.
They will be sandblasted.
They are sandblasted down to the metal.
Down to the metal and prep for paint.
Every one of them are sandblasted down to the metal. In other words, the factory coating's coming off, too.
Our packet says sandblasted. I would take that to mean the factory coating's coming off. I can't imagine if you sandblast something, the factory coating's gonna...
Thank you.
Norman, man, in Salina, there's another method besides painting. You can use it, these big utility power poles out in the country, they do not paint them.
I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Mayor, I move we award the bid for project number 25017, Fire Hydrant Painting, to Wildcat Painting Incorporated of Wichita, Kansas, in an amount not to exceed $200,000, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Wildcat Painting Incorporated of Wichita upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to award the bid for project number 25017, Fire Hydrant Painting, to Wildcat Painting Incorporated of Wichita, Kansas, for a total project authorization not to exceed $200,000. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Same sign, passes 5 to 0. And that brings us back to 4.4.
Consider awarding the bid for the Broadway Media Number 4 project to Prairie Land Works Incorporated of McPherson, Kansas, in an amount not to exceed $548,718.35.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ron Marsh, Director of Public Works. Commissioner, what are your questions on this project?
Well, it's another, I consider this a big-ticket item, and I'd just like the public to know what we're doing, and this is the final leg of the Broadway Media improvement, and I think everyone's very happy with the improvements we've made.
Yes, sir. This is the fourth of, or the final project for the Broadway Medians. The first three projects made improvements on Broadway from Marietta Avenue to Republic Avenue, and this will cover Republic Avenue to Cloud Avenue, plus small sections on either side of, north on either side of State Street. So bids for this project were received on October 9, 2025, and Prairie Land Works submitted the lowest bid, which was $522,588.90. We do have a 5% contingency of $26,129.45 for a total project price of $548,718.35. And Jim Kowat, City Engineers, here if you have any questions from the engineering side.
And do they have an approximate start date and completion date?
Jim, do you know? We don't have that yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any member of the public wish to comment on this item? And I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Mayor, I move we approve a motion awarding a bid for project number 24016, Broadway Medians Number 4, to Prairie Land Works Incorporated of McPherson, Kansas, in the amount of $522,588.90 with a $26,129.45 construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $548,718.35, and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Prairie Land Works, Inc. of McPherson, Kansas, upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to award the bid for Broadway Medians Number 4 project to Prairie Land Works Incorporated of McPherson, Kansas, in the amount not to exceed $548,718.35. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Same sign, passes 5 to 0. That takes us to Administration 5.1.
Item 5.1, consider awarding the bid for project number 24028-2025, I'm sorry, project number 24028, 2025 water main replacement, to Mice Construction Incorporated of Wichita, Kansas, in an amount not to exceed $2,979,039.
Thank you. Ms. Tasker.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Martha Tasker, Director of Utilities. As you probably remember, the city has been replacing existing cast iron water mains since 2010. Our water distribution system consists of right around 350 miles of water mains, and they range from 2-inch to 30-inch. And a large share of those were constructed in the early 1900s through 1960, particularly when the Air Force Base was in play in Salina. The water system currently consists of about 182 miles of cast iron mains, and of those, 123 miles or 6-inch or smaller. So we are blessed with a lot of cast iron water mains, and it's really not a blessing. I'm joking there. This water main replacement project covers about 2 miles of line of that, 3.35 miles of 12-inch, 0.4 miles of 8-inch, and 1.2 miles of 6-inch. On September 25, we received two bids for the project, one from Mice Construction from Wichita in the amount of $2,837,180, the second from Smoky Hill LLC in the amount of $3,787,675. The engineer's estimate was 4.1 million, roughly. Staff followed up with Mice Construction after the bids were received. Since there was some distance between the two bids, we wanted to confirm that they felt their bid was correct and that they met the requirements of the contract documents, and they indicated they did. Mice Construction completed a water main project for us in 2014, roughly 2% in change orders, and they completed it on time. They also completed the South Ohio water and sewer expansion for the Celine County project out south on Ohio, and that project was completed on time and no change order. So based on the quality of work they've done with us and for other cities, we checked with, staff recommends awarding this water main replacement project to Mice Construction Incorporated with an amount not to exceed $2,979,039. That includes a 5% construction contingency. Then to just give a little update on status of water main replacements since 2010, the city, including these projects that we just talked about today for the project coming up that we're awarding, we'd be at $27.6 million and 44 miles of line. So we've made some pretty good progress on our list. And just for a slight look ahead, the projects we have in design, and some are completed further than others, is Overlook Estates. That's about 0.6 miles. It's a 12-inch water main for fire protection to the new Overlook Estates and some existing subdivisions. We have about 2.5 miles of water mains out at the Salina Airport area, mainly from Big Bertha or Tony's Road down to General Gym. We've had several water main breaks in that area that's been a great, big inconvenience to the Airport Authority, Schwan's, and to K-State, so they're very anxious for us to get that project done. And we have some additional water main replacements on 10th and 11th Street for just real poor water quality and miscellaneous other projects. So we have several more miles that will be into play in the very near future altogether. Those are about another four-plus miles of line, so we're making progress. Again, this project is in not-to-exceed amount of $2,979,039. The water and sewer rates are based on $4 million for water main replacements in 2025, which is a project we're talking about today. And then every other year, which would be 2027 and 2029, $4 million of water main replacements in those years. Staff has identified four options. Option 1 is approve a motion awarding the project for this water main project to Mice Construction in an amount not to exceed $2,979,039. Approve a motion with amendments as the city commission would desire, postpone, or vote to deny. Staff recommends option 1. This time, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Can you explain a little bit how you determine which lines are gonna be replaced?
I can. We take all the calls that come in for water quality, and then all of the calls we have for water main breaks, and we put those on heat maps and try to look at which areas, a combination of the both, or which have the greatest problems. Water quality with the number of cast iron mains that we have is really, we fix an area, and it's like a domino. Then their neighbors hear how great their water is, and then we just keep moving. So water quality is our hardest one to get our arms around. Water main breaks are a little easier to make decisions on and get done, which was the case up on Hillside Drive for that project. Ductile iron pipe, but pipe had many, many breaks in that section of pipe. So we take a lot of phone calls. Whenever we talk to anyone, we indicate, please call in, because it's kind of like your vote. Everyone that calls in gets counted on our list, and that helps kind of quantify the areas we work in. Does that give you enough indication?
So since we've been going with PVC, I don't know how many years we've been running PVC, but...
About 2,000, since 2000.
Okay. Do those lines break?
Not to the degree of the old cast iron and ductile iron pipes. We've seen a few where if there was a poor installation and something was in the trench and deformed the pipe possibly, but for the most part, we're not having problems with PVC, and they're very smooth and slick inside, so the growth is not the same as it is in the old cast iron pipe that have no lining. Ductile iron pipe has a lining in it to try to help with that, and ductile indicates that it's a little flexible and supposed to withstand. Cast iron is cast iron and doesn't move much and doesn't have a coating, so it gets a check mark for both of those problems. So PVC's very good.
Thank you.
And that is what we, I would say, for our projects, we get is PVC in all cases, a river crossing or some long connection like that where we don't want joints, we would use high-density polyethylene. But PVC seems to be what we get in contractors' bid and what gets installed today.
Thank you. Okay.
I have a quick question for Ms. Tasker.
Yes.
I just received a call late last week about some poor water quality in a neighborhood. What is the timeline if we receive a request and we find that it's necessary to replace? I know at one point, we had trouble even spending our $2 million a year because we had a hard time finding companies that had time to do it. So what is the approximate timeline nowadays if something like that happens?
I wish I had a clear-cut answer for that. It depends upon all of the projects that we're working on, but once the area is defined, then we have to get it in the budget and then get it designed and out to bid. So I always think it's at least one year before that comes into play because we do have a list of individuals that have already made it on our list, and then if some area comes in that we think needs moved up, we have the opportunity to do that, but I don't know that there's a magic answer, but we try to do that within one to two years, and that sounds like a horribly long time, but to get it listed and designed.
Yeah, and I guess, I get it. And I guess this is a question maybe for Mr. Wood, but if we have a neighborhood where the water quality is such that they can't drink it and they can't really do their laundry, how would we go in, and I know we have our budget set, how would we go in and amend our budget and try to move something up? Because one to two years just doesn't seem feasible if we have neighborhoods that have that poor water quality.
Well, I think initially, if we have an issue in a neighborhood, we would do things like try to flush the lines and maybe take other action that's not necessarily replacing the lines, but we certainly can, you know, take a look if there's a place that needs to be moved up the list and reprioritize. That's certainly something we can always do.
And we have done some of those with Mark Street and others that have come into play. It's just going through the history and trying to confirm all the complaints, talking to the other customers that live in the same block and area and trying to confirm how much area is it? Is it one or two individuals, or is it several houses, several blocks?
I guess my comment is, I don't want us to use the, have it budgeted as an issue because we do have the funds, and if we... And if we have to do a budget amendment, I would be for doing that. So that's all I had to say.
I think we've always been thankful that we have the dollars to spend. A lot of it has to do with getting it designed, getting it bid, and having a contractor. The last water main replacement project we bid, we had one bidder. And sometimes those projects drag over past the time they're due to be complete. And all of that ends up, we can only have so many projects out in construction and have all the staff we need to make sure the work's done appropriately. So there's a lot of things we weigh together to try to sort through it. But if someone had horribly bad water and we have an area or two that we're talking to right now, some areas we have lots of history with. Some areas just pop up now as history with them. So, but we do go out and test the water at all those locations, look at the turbidity and try to determine where's it fit in with the rest of the picture. So a lot of effort goes into looking into it. Does that help, Mike?
Yep, that's very good. Thank you very much.
Any member of the public wish to comment on this item?
Is this the representative of the contractor here?
No, they're not.
Okay. Would like to meet him since it's been a while since they've done work here.
I think they'll be in town for about a year or so.
All right. I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, move to award the bid for project number 24028, 2025 Water Main Replacement to Mies Construction of Wichita in the amount of $2,837,180 with a 5% construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $2,979,039 and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Mies Construction upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents.
Second. We have a motion and a second to award the bid for project number 24028, the 2025 Water Main Replacement to Mies Construction Incorporated, Wichita, Kansas, in an amount not to exceed $2,979,039. Those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, passes 5-0. Onto 5.2.
Item 5.2, consider approval of ordinance number 25-11261, adopting the 2025 standard traffic ordinance.
Good afternoon. My name is Brad Sutton. I'm the city prosecutor and I come before you today asking for adoption of the 2005 standard traffic ordinance for Kansas cities. Each year, we, my office asks that it be passed so that we, our officers can enforce the most recent ordinances that are passed, prepared and published by the League of Kansas Municipalities. Each year, we make some changes just based on things that we have within our city, the certain authority of the police, maximum speed limits in certain areas, stopping, parking in certain areas specifically like bike lanes that some cities don't have. And then unlawful operation of golf carts on sidewalks. This year, the, there's just a few changes from last year. They added a passing of stationary vehicle displaying hazard or caution signals. In the past, we've always had to move over for police officers and EMS vehicles. Now, if someone's pulled over and has their flashing lights for a stop, for a change of tire or something, you're required to move over if possible, just for safety. They've changed the, they added the hazard or caution signals to that statute. They amended the 114-point, Section 114.5, unlawful operation of a worksite utility vehicle. They put ATV in there instead of worksite utility vehicle last year. So they changed that language. And then the last section, 201.1, failure to comply with the traffic citation. Last year, they had language in there that they changed the law or changed the way that the DMV and whatnot dealt with suspended license and so forth. 201.1 last year ended December 31st, 2024, and 201.2 took over. This year, they just took out the 201.1 and made 201.2 that statute. So it's really not a change, just numbering. This year, I'll let everyone know that I just noticed it today when I printed it, the city of Salina downtown will actually be on the book this year. So they actually honored our city with our downtown on the book this year. So that's kind of one of those things. But as far as that goes, recommendations are that you approve the ordinance to adopt, you approve it with amendments, postpone consideration to a specific date or to vote to deny. This just gives the officers in my office opportunity to enforce those ordinances. So if anyone has any questions, I'll...
Just one, I think I probably know the intent. But Section 85A, where it talks about stop, standing, or parking a vehicle, and it gives all those examples. And one of them is included, includes the bicycle lane. In B, it says stand or park a vehicle except to momentarily pick up or discharge a passenger. Is that implied in A as well?
Yeah, yeah. If you're pulling over to let someone out or something, you're allowed to do that, just can't park.
Exactly. Notice the wording was slightly different in those two there. Assuming someone's going to bring their vehicle to a complete stop to discharge someone.
I always put it in park when I let my wife out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any member of the public wish to comment on this item?
Man, Winhol Salina. Is there an area to where the average citizen can go to see what the changes are for this, for the, basically, ordinance, the standard traffic ordinance? Is there a place that anybody can find all of the changes plus all of the rules as far as traffic laws in Salina?
Yeah, so the changes will actually be listed in the ordinance. So, and then the standard traffic ordinance is, is available online. So you can get it on our website.
It is available on the Salina website. Can you tell exactly where that is? Because sometimes your site is hard to maneuver.
It's under municipal codes.
Under municipal codes. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, move we approve ordinance number 25-11261, adopting the 2025 standard traffic ordinance with the changes recommended by the city prosecutor.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance number 25-11261, adopting the 2025 standard traffic ordinance with the changes recommended by the city prosecutor. And that will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hopick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ivey?
Aye.
Commissioner Longbine?
Aye.
Mayor Lenkowitz?
And that takes us to 5.3.
Item 5.3, consider approval of ordinance number 25-11260, adopting the 2025 Uniform Public Offense Code.
Mr. Sutton?
Good afternoon again. Again, I'm Brad Sutton, city prosecutor. And I'm before the commission today, asking that the commission approve the ordinance to adopt the 2025 Uniform Public Offense Code. Again, the League of Kansas Municipalities publishes that each year. And this year, they only suggested one change, which was adding a definition to the trespassing on a critical infrastructure facility, which just added some definitions regarding above-ground and under, below-ground lines, broadband in wireless communication and video services for infrastructure. Each year, Salina, we've made, the actual, my office and my predecessors have made some changes that we've suggested. And I continue with most of those changes, or all of them, in fact, I believe. Disorderly conduct, the 9.1, we've always added Section 4, which is willfully throwing, depositing, placing any substance upon any property which another has an interest without the consent when such action does not constitute a criminal damage to property. We've changed in the past or recommended changes to the unlawful discharge of a firearm in 10.5, which basically adds two subsections, which allows a gunsmith to pursue his or her trade and also for discharge by the Salina Airport Authority for wildlife hazard reduction purposes. We've also made a change to the 10.6 in the past for air gun, air rifle, bow arrow, slingshot, BB gun, and paintball gun, which just added a section which allows for instructional programs, either through City of Salina or any other educational institution who follows through with the requirements. Those have been all suggested in the past and I would ask that those be adopted as well. In the past, we've also had some omissions and I'm, again, asking for those omissions. There are several that are listed that we've actually covered under city code, it's more specific. And so we ask that those be, we prefer that the city code take precedence over those. There's some crimes that we feel that are better suited for the district court, some of the financial crimes, possessions of controlled substances other than marijuana, and also the distribution of controlled substances. We feel that the district courts have the means and the probation and so forth to better serve those, those crimes. There is a statute, the electioneering statute, that for some reason still has what we believe is a wrong statute number in there. So each year, we ask that that be changed just to reflect the current KSA statute in there. The recommendations that you have, or are to adopt, to adopt or approve the ordinance as recommended by myself, to approve the ordinance with amendments, to postpone, or to vote to deny ordinance 25-1126. Anyone has any questions?
Thank you. We have any questions for Mr. Sutton?
Thank you.
Any member of the public wish to comment on this item? I'll bring it back to the commission.
Move to approve ordinance 25-11260, adopting the 2025 Uniform Public Offense Code.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance number 25-11260, adopting the 2025 Uniform Public Offense Code, which changes as recommended by the city prosecutor. And that is another roll call vote.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hopick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ivey?
Aye.
Commissioner Longbine?
Aye.
Mayor Lenkowitz?
So we don't have any development business? That brings us to other business. Any commissioner have other business they wish to discuss?
Yeah, I have an item. Coming up on November 8th is one of the bigger events, biggest events of the year in Salina, the 2025 Crossroads Marathon. There are almost up to 5,000 runners registered. And they still need volunteers to help monitor the course, hand out packets, awards, you name it. It takes a lot of people contributing to make this event happen and be successful. So if anyone's interested, please go to the Crossroads Marathon website and sign up to volunteer. And hopefully, this wet weather will pass by then. And we'll have a great day.
Great event, great turnout last year.
Yeah, I have one thing that when you guys on the sitting there are done. Does anybody else have anything, Mayor Lenkowitz?
No, I sure don't.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. Two weeks ago, I thought I shared what was some really important information for the citizens of Salina concerning our mil levy calculation and how we compare to other counties and cities of like size. And I wanted to give a thank you to Salina 311. I thought they did an excellent job of covering that information and sharing it with the public. But at the same time, I find myself very disappointed with KSL Link, Salina Post, and the Salina Journal for not picking it up. I think some of this information is information the public needs to know. And I think when we as a governing body wonder why we're somewhat frustrated with the knowledge and the information of our constituency, I think we can see why when we get that type of coverage on that type of information. So again, I just want to give a shout out to Salina 311 for their coverage.
Thank you.
Mayor, I do have one thing. So earlier today, as you, as you're aware, there's a group of local citizens that have been attempting to get signatures for a petition to remove the breed-specific language from our animal ordinances. That group did submit a petition today. So the process from this point, that petition will go to the county. The county will look at all the names, they will certify it. And at the point that they come back and tell us that the petition is certified, the city has a certain timeframe to either pass the ordinance as it stands or to move that on to a special election in the near future. So that process started today. The county will, will go through those, those signatures. I'm not exactly sure how long it will take them to do that. But as soon as we have more information on, on that petition, whether it's certified or not, we'll have more information to the city commission.
Thank you. Well, that brings us to Citizens Forum. Please be cognizant of the three-minute time constraints and please keep it civil, please and thank you.
Tyler Sartain, we are the Part of Salinans Against BSL that turned in the petition today. Whatever happens, we know that there needs to be a change in Salina and we hope that we can all just kind of work together on it, whether it's to create a different ordinance or just something that'll better suit everything, help our shelter. Because our shelter, it needs a lot of help. It's taken a bunch of dogs and they're just full. And it's hard for them. And it's really difficult when they do have to put dogs down. It's not fun. We've sat out accumulatively for about a year and a half talking with thousands of Salinans. And they all can agree that something needs to be done, whether it's keep it ordinance, leave it, change it. Something needs to change to better the community. So if there's any other questions, you guys have my email. If the citizens or community has any questions, they can find us on Facebook and we can chat then. Other than that, we look forward to seeing this done. I know since the election and they have tax stuff going on, the accounting will probably kind of be on the back burner, which it is what it is. But we look forward to seeing things change. So thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Doug Remp. I'm going to sound like a broken record, but Cedar Ridge Drive, it's been closed more than it's been open over the last year and a half. I know Mr. Longbine mentioned a couple-ish weeks back that they plan on having it done before Thanksgiving. I know the weather's not cooperating at this time of year. I just hope somebody, either we get the road open or once again, try to light a fire under them because it just makes an awful inconvenient and a, and a safety factor too for that part of the community. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Do we have a timeline on that by chance?
I don't have one off the top of my head. We'll have to do some research.
Mayor, Commissioner, my name is Nancy Slavik. I live at 11 Villa Drive. Villa Drive is a part of the Presbyterian Manor complex. I believe that those of you on the commission received a letter from Presbyterian Manor Independent Living Council regarding our concern for the safety at the intersection of Crawford, Markley, and the entrance to Presbyterian Manor. I represent those individuals living independently at the manor. One of our concerns as independent residents is our safety and that relates to that intersection just mentioned. I would like for us to think a little bit about the traffic that is generated on Markley Road. We're going to take a little trip. We're going to start at the Southern Sack... We're going to start at the southern section, intersection, at Markley and Magnolia, and we're going to travel north. As we travel, there are two housing developments there, Magnolia Estates and Wheatland Valley. The only exit entrance to those areas is via Markley Road. We travel on north, we come to the newly painted water tower. There is an intersection there that is under construction or updating, that is part of Marymount Road. If you think about Marymount, it goes down to the golf course, and there are lots of new residential areas in that part of the city, which increases the traffic from Marymount Road intersection with Markley Road. Just to the east of that is the old airport runway. There are some activities that take place on that runway during the summer, which is a lot of people and lots of cars. That's all I know, I don't know what it is, but there's lots of activity there. Then we go on to the ballpark. Wonderful use of that area, generally from early spring until the snow flies, there is traffic there. Then when we get to the intersection of Markley, Crawford, and the entrance to the Manor, looking to the east, Crawford narrows just as you get past Presbyterian Manor, which can be a traffic hazard. Another thing is a new fire station, which is going to be more traffic, people using the facility, as well as the emergency vehicles. Now let's talk about Presbyterian Manor, which is just across the street. Beginning next month, we are having a groundbreaking, and we are going to be enlarging the main building. The construction will take place, hopefully be finished within a year, which is going to mean more traffic. When you think of Presbyterian Manor with the new villa area, there are approximately 130 to 135 independent living people. We go downtown, we have to travel Markley to get to Walmart, for heaven's sakes, so there is a lot of traffic on Markley that we are concerned about. For that reason, we think for the safety of anybody who travels through that intersection, it would be advantageous to have a stoplight there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
City manager of Public Works, you know, we have in design right now to widen that area.
Yes, we do, and as part of the design for widening east Crawford, we have asked engineers to look at that intersection and do traffic studies, and determine whether they feel like it's warranted to have a traffic signal at that location. There are also, at this point, we're planning to put in a crosswalk and a HAWK system, which is the push-button light that, right, would be, I think, what, to the east of Markley, in between Markley and the driveway for the new fire station. So, there's that in the works, but we do have an engineer that's studying that intersection, and they'll tell us whether a signal is warranted or not.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm Lucille Sanderson, and I'm here to talk about whoever bird-brained idea to build that hotel in an actively-used parking lot. That parking lot is used for a lot of people every day that work on Santa Fe, and you're saying, "Well, let them find where they're going to park. They're going to have a h of a time finding a place." Not only are they going to find a place to park, all the construction trucks and everything are going to take up space. The Stiefel has a program, "Wonder where the people park." They're not parking on the street, they're parking in that parking lot. I know who the person is that bought that. I'm not going to mention their name, but it kind of makes me think that they're a lot like the man that's supposed to be running our government, and is not doing a very good job. And I wonder how many of you guys allowing this to take place have got some padded-back pockets? Because it's really ridiculous to let that take place. Years and years ago, there was a hotel downtown at Ash and Santa Fe. You have that parking lot up there at that intersection, you go by that, there's hardly anybody parked in there. Yes, you want the farmer's market, we'll move that. Take and tear down that little thing in the corner. That's not very big, you don't use that all year. Put the hotel there, tell that gentleman to re-enter his money somewhere else. It's ridiculous, and I think, heaven forbid, we need a new slate of county, city commissioners. You guys have done a terrible job. Cozy Inn, the motel on West Crawford, now the log jam, and now the hotel. Lighten up, guys. We need a new set of commissioners, and thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Anyone else?
Benwynhold Salina. First thing I've got is, this is for the city manager, Jacob Wood. Can you give me an update on the 46 properties being looked into and trying to be negotiated for city property along the river? Where we're at right now? How many of those are in intimate domain? How many of those have been approved? How many more are yet to go?
Well, so we haven't done any imminent domain on anything, so I can tell you that that's zero, but I don't have an update. I don't know where we're at in the process with all of those properties. I mean, there's certainly been some discussions that have happened, but we're not that far along.
And they're not, the company that's doing this is not keeping you informed?
Well, we have lots of projects that happen throughout the city, and lots of different people are focused on those, so I just, I don't have an update.
Okay.
Could certainly find more information out.
Thank you. I've noticed during this election cycle that the incumbents have had their own twist on the good things that they've done while they've been here for, as commissioners, and that's all fine, but I found one really interesting, because I got this in the mail Friday. Okay. Crime crusher, Greg Lenkowitz.
You, well, I just got to the chase.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not responsible for that.
You're not responsible for this? You're not responsible for this?
No, sir, I'm not.
So the GOP of Kansas just put money in your campaign?
No.
Well, this goes towards your campaign, in other words, it's a mail-in.
They did that, and they spent the money on it, presumably. I have not spent, I've not received funds.
So you didn't okay this?
No, sir.
You didn't okay this at all?
No, sir. Sometimes parties taking interest in campaigns, I'm flattered that they took an interest in mine, but that being said, anybody that knows me and knows how I talk, I don't speak in those manners. Like, I don't speak, that's kind of a sensationalized version of me, and I don't tend to.
And then that was my next question, is, you had said at one of the forums that you have one and a half years of experience in law enforcement?
No, sir.
How long?
Around six.
Around six.
One and a half around here, most of it was in the Kansas City area, about four years, four and a half years in the KC area.
Okay.
So, over half a decade.
So, if you didn't approve this, how is this even going, how is this even legal? Because it's a reflection on your campaign to be re-elected.
I don't know the nuances, other than I know that sometimes political action committees will spend money and take the time to apparently boost a candidate, for whatever reason they took an interest in me.
And that would be the reason I'd want to know, is what the GOP in Kansas has in the game for a city commission race.
I don't have an answer for you.
Somewhere on there, there should be, tell you who paid for it.
It does, it says right there, the GOP of Kansas paid for it.
Well, then that's who you need to address your questions to. He did not pay for it.
But when I get this in the mail, and anybody else gets this, they're going to think that this is the man, he approved this, this is what he's going for on his election, what he stands for.
Mr. Winholtz, four years ago, a mailer went out against me and a couple, three other candidates. Negative.
Okay. But this is a positive.
Did I have a say in that? No.
This is not negative for anybody, this is a positive. This is not negative, this is not demeaning a candidate in any meaningful way.
The mayor did not control that.
So I guess what I'm, I should ask Mr. Bankston, because I feel like we've kind of entered into a, no longer really commission business, it's campaign business, and I think it feels like we're in an area we probably don't. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I've, like I said, I don't have anything to do with that. Again, that's not how I would market myself to the community, but somebody took an interest in me, I'm flattered, and there it is. There's a text and campaign as well.
Yeah, there's a text, yeah, I got that too.
I just want to make sure you knew.
Yeah, oh, I got that too, there's an email campaign, there's this mailing campaign, there's.
There's an email campaign?
Email, yeah.
Okay, that's new to me, I wasn't aware of that. So thank you for that information.
Thank you. Oh, since I, some time has stopped, and I've got a little bit of time. You were looking at, somebody had asked, and I think it was Commissioner Davis asked when they were talking about the new hotel going downstairs, or downtown, downstairs, downtown, that there was going to be a parking garage, and if anybody had ever looked into what Salina Regional has to go through with their parking garage. I can tell you firsthand, being in maintenance for five and a half years, just what that entails. The five-story parking garage has to be power-washed every six months for all of the stuff that comes from cars, and all of the trash. They had trouble with birds going on the cars, making habitat in there, they had to completely net the whole thing to try to keep the birds out. And Salina Regional has 24/7 security guards, and one of their things to do during that time of being on the clock is every hour, they have to go through the parking garage to figure out, because it is very, very easy to break into somebody's car when you're in an isolated area like that. So that's something the city would need to look into if you're going to take over ownership of a parking garage once it's constructed.
Thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon. My name is Jamie Bradley, I'm the president of Doug Bradley Trucking. We're here in Salina at 680 East Waterwell Road. I'm here today to advocate for traffic lights rather than a roundabout at the intersection of Waterwell and 9th Street. I'm here representing not only myself, but a few others who couldn't be here with us today. Those would include Brett Wise, the president of Great Plains Trucking, who hauls many loads in and out of the Kubota production facility at Waterwell and 9th, Richard Beamer, the supervisor of Penske Truck Leasing, who's right across the road from us on Waterwell Road, Mark Johnson, the general manager of the Kubota-Salina retail facility, and Michael Hablitzel, the COO of Blackbird Transportation, who handles all of the loads for Crestwood Cabinetry. And I'm joined also here today by the vice president of Doug Bradley Trucking, Noah Bradley. This intersection, that is Waterwell and 9th, is a high-truck-count intersection, and I believe the trucking perspective needs to be considered in its improvements. I do agree that changes do need to be made to that intersection, but I believe a traffic light makes more sense than a roundabout. Trucks are just too slow and too clumsy to navigate roundabouts effectively. Further, from our perspective, roundabouts are not as safe as signaled intersections. It is generally accepted that roundabouts result in more accidents, and it is accepted that semis are much more likely to overturn in a roundabout than in a signaled intersection. In fact, there is a study by the Minnesota Department of Transportation that shows that there is a 15 times greater likelihood of a truck overturning in a roundabout. You'll probably hear from others that although roundabouts have more accidents, they are less serious accidents. I'm here to tell you, in the trucking industry, there is no such thing as a minor accident. If you've watched the news lately, you'll see that it seems every lawyer out there wants a piece of trucking companies. In December of last year, we had an accident here in Salina that would have been a minor accident. We're expecting that minor accident to cost us about a quarter million dollars. In our opinion, more accidents, regardless of their severity, is a bad idea. If I can fight to avoid a potential hazard that our drivers have to travel through, that makes them more likely to be in an accident, and makes us 15 times more likely to overturn a truck, I need to fight against it. I might also mention that I heard that this roundabout at that intersection may cost more than $3 million to construct, whereas a signaled intersection at the same site would be about a quarter of that cost. To wrap up, I've spoken to those in charge of trucks at each of the Salina companies near that intersection, who regularly have large amounts of truck traffic to their locations, and none of them prefer a roundabout over traffic lights. So I'm here today to petition for the city to spend less money and install a system that will be safer for my drivers and our company. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions if the commissioners have any.
Thank you for your comments.
Well spoken.
Norman Adams, Salina.
They don't like them in Europe either.
Norman Adams, Salina, Kansas. On the October 26, 3/11, page 2 at the lower right-hand corner about your log jam issue, that could have been removed at no expense to the taxpayer. I've got pictures of here where they are removing these dams. They're contradicting the laws of nature. You can go to, no, West Pleasant Hill Road, go west to Link Road, out in the county, and if you go south, the old bridge they had there, it was causing log jams on both sides of Mulberry, this side and that side. People would go out there and cut firewood. Well, they removed the old bridge and put in the new bridge, so changed the obstruction. There's no log jams now. This is happening all over the US, removing these dams. You do not dam, divert, disrupt the natural flow of water. If you look all over the US, they're going to remove them. They're already doing it northwest. This is getting into federal territory.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, you don't get a twofer, it's one and done.
If there's no one else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Does in favor, say aye.
Aye.